The Malanera, we are here. Mutha Valakarinyad, Saghavallakarinyad, Sattagalavimanaavim. Anavirim, Magilchior, I am here. Early morning study groups, morning. RBC is here. Red to naal, they are preparing the judge exam. Evening, senior councils, they are going to evidence side. We are here. In this way, today, we are here with Vahupadikar. About them, High Court Advocate, welcome. Vahupadikar Gavninga, if you have doubts, last question is there. Ask them. Ma'am, how are you?
Good evening all, senior study groups, everyone, good evening. Our group's vibe is starting, success does it comes to you, you goes to it. Let us share our group's opinion. So, every time success is seen, we are taking it. Every class has been governed, even if it is seen by the public. Every class is governed, everyone, I am here to welcome you. Today, we are here to give a special session. Senior Advocates in Sanjaya are here, especially welcome, welcome you sir. And today's topic is evidentiary value of section 161 and 164 statement. That is what we are going to talk about. About the court, they are asking about the court. Before that, we are going to record the one, the one sixty one statement. How they are doing it before the procedure. So, after that session, next time, I will get a chance, I will record the one sixty four statement. I am saying, you are saying, I am here to record today. Special thank you. And about the court, let us mention it. The advocates are giving a lot of speeches. There are a lot of speeches, a lot of turning points in their life. The speech of the court, how it should be done in society, how it should be done, how it should be given. A lot of speeches are given. And then, the stage is crowded. Youtube is on, around twenty five million views. So, if you get time, a lot of questions about the court. So, today's session, evidentiary value of section one sixty four and one sixty one statements. Part two, we will talk about it. The session is over to you sir, thank you sir.
Thank you, Martin. Friends, we have come to the Bovarikamal. About the one sixty one CRPC, I have told you. After a while, part two, our lecture is starting. This is about the one sixty four CRPC statement. We know a few things. One sixty four CRPC, you have seen it. It is about the procedure code. First, it is about what it is. When you see the one sixty four CRPC. Any metropolitan magistrate or judicial magistrate. Whether or not he is a jurisdiction of the case. Record any confessional statement made to him. In the courts of an investigation, under the chapter or any other time being enforced. And provided any confessions or statement made under section. May also recorded by audio, video, electronic means. In presence of advocate of the accused of an offense. You know, substitution is about the audio, video, electronic evidence. Record it, it is thirty one, twenty, two thousand nine hundred. They are introducing a new technology in the CRPC. But this prohibition is not applicable to Fox Act. When you take the Fox Act, the victim girl or victim. When the one sixty four CRPC has evidence. So, specifically, they are saying to you. When the victim is talking, the audio or video mode is recorded. Accused advocate, not present, a specific bar is created. However, you see, it is a special act. About the procedure. This is CRPC, it is a general procedure. So, special act procedure prevails. However, you can't demand for a right to a case of Fox Act. The one sixty four CRPC, it is about the one sixty one statement. Now, accused as a matter of reading. This one sixty four prohibition is available. That is bad. In Fox Act. Now, you have seen it. However, further, what is said here? Before recording the confession statement, what is duty? Master's duty is what? You have to give the confession, you do not have to. No problem. This is what you give, it is what you use. So, first. Wan Manam, a magistrate, a judicial magistrate. A accused was presented. Wan Manam. If he agrees, he will give him time. He will give him time. That is all. Record it, he finished it. Is he voluntary? He checked it. He said, he said. He said, he said. He is old, he is old. The body language of the accused, is he old? Suppose, the accused, no, no, he is not in a police system. Police is not present. So, it is like this. He will not give the police custody. Because, the accused is charged. So, subsection three, what is said? This is what accused refused to give. Confession statement, not willing to give. It should not be given, police custody, it should be sent to the judicial custody alone. So, it is a condition. Next condition, in section four, in section four. This is complete section two eighty one body. For accused, what is the procedure, section two eighty one CRPC. What is the procedure? Vote, not to give. If the witness says, the accused will say. If he says, he is voluntary. So, two eighty one, accused is examined. He will hold his hands. Hold his hands. What is he saying? He will write a footnote. This is what I have explained to the accused. That he is not bound to make a confession. And that if he does so, any confession he may make may be used as evidence against him. And I believe that this confession was voluntary made. It was taken in my process and hearing and was read over to the person making it. And admitted by him to be correct. And it contains a full and true account of statement made by him. Obviously, our footnote. Our identity, a sign, hold it. So, you see, confession statement in section two and four. The two are, you see, mandatory. I will go next. So, one sixty four subclass five, what is said? That deals with witnesses' statement, one sixty four subclass five. Witnesses are accused. In circumstances, what is done, the witness is admitted. And the statement is recorded. This is section, subsection five. Any statement made under subsection one shall be recorded in such a manner. Hereafter, words provided for recording evidence as is. In the opinion, message best fitted to the circumstance of the case. That the magistrate have power to administer vote to person whose statement is so recorded. The same thing you see. Five A, you know, an amendment is here. This is from two thousand eighteen. In the case of violence against women. Section three fifty four, section three six. What is it? When the commission. When the offense is started. As soon as it is prosecuted, as soon as it is done. It is done, number one. This is when, sometimes, they are temporarily or permanently mentally physically disabled. A interpreter, with it, it is recorded. This is one sixty five. Shall proceed according to provision one sixty five, shall borrow things, if any, at request of the. Sorry. So, section five. At the same time, another one, you see, one sixty four. This is temporary, permanently, mentally or physically disabled person. For one sixty four subclass five, a witness statement, magistrate recorded. Later, the person, again, once again, went to trial. No need to say. That is what is in subsection five A, the prohibition. A statement recorded under class A of person. Who is temporarily or permanently mentally or physically disabled. Shall be considered as a statement in the lieu of examination, chief examination. As specified in section one thirty seven of the Indian Evidence Act. And the matter of the statement can be cross-examine on such a statement. Without the need of recording same at the time of trial. So, you have seen it. One, mentally retarded, physically disabled. This is what mentally, physically disabled, temporarily or permanently. For magistrate court, one sixty four subclass five, statement recorded. They are charging them. They are copying them. Charging is great. Trial starts. Now, the victim was presented. If we have a copy of our paper, we are here. The one sixty four subclass five statement, chief examination. We are directly cross example. They need to organize the children. They are talking about audio. You take it as chief, cross it. Now, if the recording is done, if there is no jurisdiction magistrate. The recording is finished. The accused statement is made, or witness statement is made, concerned judicial statement. And it is one sixty four CRPC. But you see, this is about the procedure. Many things are not said. What are they saying to you? They are saying, criminal rules of practice. Criminal rules of practice, High Court evolved. State government notified. You see, our judicial officers have rich experience. How to do it minutely? Each thing, they are organizing it. Frame rules, follow it. Understand. Now, look. Rule ten. Chapter two, criminal rules of practice, two thousand ninety. This is one one two thousand twenty, it is here. Very clear. Section ten, recording of confession. This is a I O. He is accused, arrested, twenty seven victory, finished. Remanded, brought back, remanded, jailed. After jail. He was in jail, he was meeting. Why, they are giving confession, they are giving a lot of money, judicial magistrate. Or other people, the magistrate is very confident. He believed it. What he will do, for accused's statement, or magistrate's record. If he does it, he will go to judicial magistrate. Now, we are in a C J M court. Another one, we are in Chennai, Chennai. There, we will go to the chief magistrate. He will go, he will go, he will go, he will go. This is what I believe, the accused in this case. Confession is ready. Give him a master appointment. He saw it, he saw it. After that, he will do something. What will he do? Concerned magistrate, chief magistrate, will arrest him. He went there. This is what is happening. In that time, accused is not allowed to go to jail. In jail. After that, now, he will go. This is what you have to give confession. You have a magistrate before. You do not have a problem with confession. You are giving a lot of money, not in a police system. How you have a magistrate, a confession, you will approve it. You are a witness. You will not have conviction. It is all happening, you cannot see. So, it is like this. At the same time. Now, one, one. He is accused, he is explaining, one sixty four CRPC. How many things are not done? That is what you do minutely, criminal rules of practice. What is said, he is saying, he is saying, he is saying. I am not a police officer. You are afraid, you are afraid. You have said something wrong. It is not possible. You are giving a lot of money, not in a police system. However, if you give a confession, a day, you will approve it. Do you want to take a witness? You will not have a problem if you do not have a problem. This is not guaranteed. That is all. Now, you can do anything. Confession, you can do anything. Who will use you, you will use me. You will do it. So, this is what is very clear. Everyone asks. The accused is very proud. He knows the language. He knows Tamil. He is an interpreter. The interpreter, if he is, he will tell us. What is he saying? The magistrate records it. That is all. Many people ask him, he is a volunteer. Or others are present. If you know, he will ask many questions. Ask him, but purpose is what? He is telling himself. Who is looking, are they present? Or is there a benefit? So, it is not possible to have. The magistrate is very old. That is all. This is what he asked. It is typed. He can do anything, he can type his language. He is talking in the background, he is talking. His words. Who is present? Who is present? Who is looking? Approved, you will get your exam. Approved, you will be a witness. Approved, you will be approved. He asked, is there? Who is looking? Police is not present, no, others are not present. Now, he will type whatever he asks. After that, the accused, clearly, reasonably, his words, it is recorded. After that. After that. He will say, I am not present, I am not present. Criminal rules of practice, section ten, rule ten, subclass four. Minimum twenty four. If accused person, after being so questioned. Expressly, decide to make a statement. Message shall give him reasonable time for reflection. Which ordinarily, not less than twenty four hours. So, you see, you see, you know. Today, Gupta, he is speaking. How many questions? The accused, I am voluntary, I am not present. Minimum, one, one day, he is present. Police of a matter, he is a mayor. Judicial custody. We will know, the accused will be accused. After that, again, the magistrate, he repeats. This is what you say, you do not have a problem. So, you say, you will use me. Now, you are in jail, who is a policeman? He will tell you. So, he will ask. I will say a positive. This is not necessary, I am only volunteering. So, you say. The court, a volunteer statement, then start to record the statement. What to do during court hours? If there is no exception circumstances, court hours, after that, he will go to court. In closed doors, he will record. At the same time, when you record. The policeman, he will not see the accused. This is what is said, he will record. That is all. His language, he asked, he knew. His language, he will use it. He will record. So, until he is done, he will talk in Tamil. He will talk in Tamil. He will talk in Tamil. People speak Tamil, they will speak here. This is what he will say, this is what he will say. He will talk in Tamil. His own language. After that, he will not worry. He will explain to him. This is the language. What is it? The accused, he agrees, I am telling you. Tell me if it is correct. After that, one sixty four CRPC, subsection four, the certificate is opened. We have seen it. This is what he said, he said, he said. I have done it. The certificate is done. What to do after that? He will go to judicial custody. The rules, what is said? He will take a copy, take two photos. Take two photos. Original, where to go, judicial magistrate. Who knows the confirmation statement? What is the confession, accused? He said, he said. He is leading. If the confession statement, he is recording, confession statement. He will say, he will say. He said, he said. He said, he said. Any other information, section twenty seven. Evidence act, this is all, what to do? Confession recorded by magistrate. First, judicial magistrate. Take two photos, one I O, one audio file. Then, I O, he will review, file investigation, final report. This is all completed. Criminal rules of practice, judicial form. He filled it. You see, but I said, method. A I O. He was arrested, remanded, accused. Voluntarily, he gave a confession before. His C J M, or chief magistrate. He gave a man, he said. Because, he gave a judicial magistrate. Judicial magistrate is not needed. In that man, not judicial magistrate. What is different? Suppose, a accused is a volunteer. He is a volunteer. Accused is a volunteer. Or accused is in jail, he is old. I am a confession, I am a volunteer. Two circumstances, one, when he is in jail. I am going to the court. My mind is very tired. I agree, he is a lieutenant. He is in jail. Who is a judicial judge? Or he is a lawyer. After that, he will go to judicial magistrate. He will say, he will cry. He will request. Now, judicial magistrate, this is recorded. Watch. How is it? I O, sponsoring accused, recording magistrate, non-jurisdictional magistrate. This accused, when he is in jail, after he is out. Overlaw, writing law. Judicial magistrate, judicial magistrate. I will tell him the confession. He will record. But procedure is safe. Wan Manam, everything is safe. How is it? I O sponsored, non-jurisdictional magistrate appointed by C J M or Chief Minister. Whereas, accused is a volunteer, judicial magistrate. This is one of the rules of practice. After that, one sixty four subclass five, other witnesses. Now, suppose. I O, his opinion. Now, one sixty one statement, concerns. Confession witnesses. This is what important witnesses say, sometimes, a accused, if he is tired. Or a neighbor, if he is old. Is he old? Or is he buying another money? If the witnesses are all changed. To achieve, a thought, a opinion, I O, he is a judicial magistrate. He will give a man. He will go to the chief judicial magistrate. He will go to the other one. What is it? Rule eleven of the criminal rules of practice. The principle. First, accused, sponsored by I O. Voluntarily by accused. This is what is it? Witnesses. This is what I O sponsored. The witness evidence. He will not go to C J M court. Chief magistrate. Direct away, or only judicial magistrate. Other section eleven, rule eleven, subclass two, it is not necessary. For I O, to approach C J M or Chief judicial, chief magistrate. With an application for nominating magistrate to record this statement of witnesses. So, in this way, you see, this is the statement of the witness. This is very special. Tell us, how to do it. After that. It is all votes. Witness on vote, you say, you are giving a lot of money. If you say, you are not present. Looking. He said, he said. The magistrate is present. The magistrate is present. He will record the witness's statement. After that, we will go. We will go. After that, what will be done? Take two copies. Or one copy. I O, he asked. Further investigation. Some witnesses, one choose statement, two say. Many things. One sixty four, one point. Many points, some points. Or, new things. That investigation is very useful. This is what is done. Now, what is it? When the one sixty one statement, I O, gets. Then, proceed. In this way, the statement is recorded. Original, he will keep. What happened? Sometimes, when the statement is recorded. The witness. What he is saying, he is telling his family. He stopped. Adha vandu subrude level la pathitthiina, in the course of recording statement. If the magistrate find that the statement itself is self-inhibited, he shall not proceed to record. Statement of such difference should be recorded following procedure required under section ten. So witness, or accused maripu, illa naandha mananaga, naandha jenganaga, naandha help panna, naandha instigate panna. Abhi nee malas start, statements olavandu charanu, appu or witness iniyi, or vandu accused allava. Or appavu stop pannitthu, ippu procedure amari pannu, andha rule ten, namamola, or accused vandu. Voluntary la, oru statement kurukavandana, not sponsored by Ivo, same procedure enna follow pannu. Vaanmantradu, am purinchiduka pro, ornal thalli vettaradu, arudara vandu, andha witness solavandana. Or accused treat pannu, record pannu, andha procedure or follow pannu. Abhi nee irundhukkunna, criminal rules of practice. So neen vandu, verum, one sixty four CRPC, mattum padichingana, allavala thurlima shala vishingala. Abhi varada bolade, appu neen vandu, eppri indha procedure thenzikummili, oru sharamuthukku ulavinda. Adhu mattumilla, ippu namalapothanu keenna, one sixteen. One sixteen statement, police record pannu, andha procedure enna, purpose enna, aprin thirinjata. Andha witness on vote, in presence of the accused, in his option, or the accused advocate. Gives evidence before the court, or a substantive piece of evidence. Andha evidence, or yekulisun, one choose statement, or one sixty four CRPC statement. Khant vikthriyasla, shingla chunnu, namada vandu kurukusana, shayirathal vandu, nee, ubhayam. Appu, redhutu purpose thiriyadu, one sixty four pottalak, appu, purpose enna namalak thiriyadu. Adhilina, romba sharam, but adhe samaya, annake, naavu pona classka sonnuma. One sixteen CRPC pottalak vandu, alakar statement vandu, contradiction purpose mattumme. Section one forty five, evidence act. Neen vandu, adha vandu, neen kandadition ku, oru prosecution tarafume. Andha witness hostile declare vandu, oru contradiction purpose, oru bind padukal, oru one sixty two, vandu specifica. Idhavu farmer statementa eduthu, prosecution tarafle, naa karabasin bind paduthu, seenchundi. Section one fifty five, seven, evidence act, invoke pannu muriyadu. Totally barred by section one sixty two CRPC. Adhe samaya, one sixty four statement, adha neen one forty five la, contradiction bind padukkala. One fifty seven la, farmer statement treat pannu, neen adha vandu, corroboration purpose. Idhavu, adha neen pathingna, Amir Hamza versus state, AMIIR. AMIR Hamza, H A M J A, Hamza versus state. Rendaiyanti iduvadu, wall into crimes, one four seven, thaukhati. Enna sudanu, one sixty four statement is by itself, admissible in evidence, as farmer statement, and section one fifty seven. For the purpose of corroboration, and it can be used to for contradiction, under section one forty three. Adhe ma neen pathitthiina, suppose. List of witnesses la, or I witness, or or confession witness, or or recurring witness. For the reason, best known to the public prosecutor, he may dispense with them. Or awdya, evidence alla, prosecution evidence muruyum bolade, endhanda witness, dispensation. Court lakrapalda la elgiyadu, anha, andha witness, accused tarafle, oruveela, visarikka. Accused kisla, sadavmana, sangadhi ellam kadekina, accused thunakka. Defense side, three thirteen, kochni muriyaduka pro, the court kara pandhi, accused to give defense evidence. Appu, oru oru manuporala, indha mariparanga, andha prosecution tarafle, top pannu. Andha witness, andh tarafle, visarikka, oru brain chundu, oru manukurutha, oru accept pannu. Andha witness ikki, someone poeyi, oru laajaram. Ippu ivar vandu, saachal, chief examination, accused tarafle, accused. Cross examination pannu, public prosecutor is prevented or barred, from using one sixteen statement, recorded by police. Idha endhavi athatina, Moti Singh versus state of Uttar Pradesh, M O T A, Moti Singh. Versus state of Uttar Pradesh, A I R, nineteen sixty four, Supreme Court, nine hundred. One sixteen statement cannot be used by prosecution, against a witness, found in the list of witnesses in the charge. But omitted by the, to be examined by prosecution, when accused exam, such a person, as a defense witness. Ena, ivunga vandu, one sixty two, sixty two CRPC, enna chulladu, or one choose statement. Saachalavara number, prosecution va visarikku bolade, contradiction akku bind paduthikulavu. Oruveela, prosecution, the witness, andh tarafle, visarikku, or hostile. One sixty two CRPC, they, avgalu contradiction purpose, andh one choose statement, oru bind padukal. But ippu shulula enna irukkade, police tarafle, oru visarikka padunku, accused tarafle, oru visarikka. Andha maripuva, oru visarikku, idhavu, one choose statement, oru bind padutha muriyadu, barred by one sixteen. Same suppose, accused thunakka, prosecution thunakka. But on reading those statements, suppose, under section one sixty five. Indian evidence act la, court or vandu, unmai thirinjukkunna, silla vishingal, vandu clarity illa. Adhapatthi thirinjukkunna, asapattu, or three level CRPC invoke pannu, andha witness vandu, court witness. Abhi court witness va visarachu, andh one sixteen statement, police bind padutha muriyadu. Adhuvu, edhe, endhathat, ippu naa chunnanu allava, A I R nineteen sixty four, Supreme Court. So vandu, one sixteen one CRPC statement, prosecution eppu bind padutha muruyum. Court witness vandu, prosecution bind padutha muriyadu, contradiction. Defense ikka witness va vandhalume, police vandu, contradiction ikka bind padutha muriyadu. It is barred by one sixty two CRPC. So idhavandu, neen vandu, andha vittiasa vandu, kereva, purinchik. Adhe ma pathingna, in the farmer statement, one fifty seven evidence act. Onnu vandu, one sixty four CRPC, vandu, namam farmer statement. F I R, adhe ma, namada vandu, farmer statement la kunduva, karnen. Or F I R kurutha, the investigation is start. Abhi F I R, paribunni, investigation start paanaduka pro, andh F I R kurutha, manidhar, one sixteen CRPC la visarikka padukal. Andh statement, contradiction na irunda, adhavandu, one forty five evidence act, use. But adhamari, investigation start pannadu, munadi, F I R kurutha. Idhavindu neen pathitthiina, idhavandu, neen farmer statement, or corroboration, bind paduthikulala. Contradiction purpose, one forty five evidence act, bind padukal. Andha maripuva athat, idha nineteen A I R, nineteen ninety six, Supreme Court, one one nine. Agnu Nageshya versus state of Bihar, A G N double O. Agnu, N A G E S I A, versus state of Bihar, A I R, nineteen ninety six, Supreme Court, one one nine. So, pottalak, F I R, it is not one choose statement. Why, investigation, investigation, it to be start, aga, one fifty seven la, corroboration. One forty five evidence act, contradiction bind padukal. Adhe ma, thandha punchanam, aasil, tappunna, adhavandu patha, adha neen, one fifty seven CRPC. Neen adha vandu, corroboration purpose, oru bind padukal. A I R nineteen fifty nine, Mathi Pradesh, padinneel, A I R nineteen fifty nine, Mathi Pradesh, padinneel. Andha maripuva athat, idha, vandu old authorities, idhavandu, follow, buni, narey, latest authorities alla, vandurukku. Adhavandu Bhagirath versus state, V H A, G A R A T, Bhagirath versus state, abhinchala. Adhe ma neen pathingna. Ippu vandu, oru witness saachalavara, andha witness, redhutu I witness, oru I witness vandu, kettirin. Oru vandu, sirugala, avar banila, soluvadu, arutha I witness, kettikvaru, P W. Oru vandu, evidence tharadu, chief examination. Pathingna, redhutu kandadition. P W one, soluna, chief examination, silla sangadhi gal, P W two, oru, maathi cholla. Andha maripuva, neen P W two, oru, P W one, neen saachalumbolade, indha maripuva santhu. Neen moranbatthu cholthu, enna cholthu, bingolik keelvi keakkalama, abhin patha, oru vee. Karna enna, previous statement, abhingira vaathi enna, andh own witness, for P W one. Oru previous statement enna, one sixty two CRPC. Adhala oru vandu, neen neerimadasaachalumbodu, contradiction ra, oru statement kuruthukunda, other vechi, neen vandu keelvi. Idhavandu enna, innor witness, innor witness vandu, court la saachal, substantive piece of evidence. Piri odhiva, soladu, substantive piece of evidence. Andh contradiction, aariyamutthu, tham bind paduthikulam. P W two, oru, piri odhiva, chunnara, enna soladu, namakkaakadu. Contradiction can be done to a witness, with regard his previous statement, not with the previous statement of another witness. Adhavindu neen kakkum muriyadu, illala, innor witness, cholithu, neen enna soladu, abhin kakkum muriyadu. This is A I R, two thousand four, Supreme Court, three one three, Chandari Ramji, boy. Narasangh boy versus state of Punjab, A I R, two thousand four, Supreme Court, three one three. Chandari Ramji, boy, Narasangh, boy versus state of Punjab. So idhavandu, neen, thenvikulavendi, puvaanu, vishi. Yaadi statement, namak contradiction bind padukal, andha witness va statement. Mattunga statement, oru, namavandu, oru bind padutha, oru. Adha vandu, neen spesika vandu, thirinjuk. Ippu abhi varum bolade, neen, ippu or magistrate vandu, confession statement vandu, oru, record panna varar. Or manasukla, var enna vishingala, enna vichukunna, section twenty four, evidence act. Twenty six, evidence act, twenty eight, evidence act, twenty nine, evidence act, idhella oru manasukla. Karna enna, section twenty four, evidence act, enna. Section twenty four, pathingna, confession caused by inducement, threat, or promise. When irrelevant in a criminal proceedings, chapthala varu, neen pathinu, section. A confession made by an accused person, is irrelevant in a criminal proceeding. If the making of confession appears to be, to the trial court, to have been caused by any inducement. Threat or promise, having reference to the charge against the accused person. Proceeding from a person in authority, and sufficient in the opinion of the court. To give the accused person grounds, which would appear to be reasonably, or supposing that. By making it, he would gain any advantage, or avoid any evil of temporal nature, referenced proceeding against. Idhata vandu, magistrate, andh one sixty four CRPC, section, subclass two la cholra. Spesica, parappa, yaaradu marathnangala, saachal, abhinchali. Neen saachal, enna, kurubathana, adhupaniruva, idhupaniruva, neen, uru, porlela, sarapaduthiruva, edhavu. Complete view, the statement, or promise, nee ra, pannapa, kurubathana, adhupaniruva, idhupaniruva. Unna, urudala vayinkutturavu, andha maadu. Alladu vandu, thoodrakku, nee solapa, idhela, allathu, nanmayarukku, deri much, oru, kunnaga, idheli, thoodrakku. Indha maripuva, vishingal, edhu, irukkakudada, one sixty four, subclass two. Adhada, section twenty four, telivachu. Ippu or magistrate, vandu, one sixty four, or statement, eduthuka pro. Adhayaethu kollamma, vandamma, angaradu, trial court la, section twenty four. Twenty four, padhi, andha maripuva, inducement, promise, idhela, gavnikamata, magistrate, vandu, one sixty four CRPC. Edhurikrara, abhin, vandu, muriyakvanda, adhiti, is, in an vision, evidence. Adha vandu, enna pannuvanga, they will not consider it, idhavu, number one. Number two, enna, section twenty six, twenty six, enna chulladu, no confession made by any person. While he is in custody of a police officer. Unless it is made immediately, in presence of a magistrate, shall be proved against him. Enna challa varanga, police custody la irukkura, samayathu, or magistrate, or accused, vandu, confession kurutha. Adhe andh accused, kethara, bind padukal, abhin, twenty six. Abhin, enna, andha maripuva, police, oru magistrate, forward, neen vandu, confession statement. One sixty four CRPC, follow pannita, andh magistrate, vandu, record pannume, tharira. Just like that, andh aajirayachu, enna pachodra, ayana othukkam, solapa, abhi, elathu, naadu, vinga, it is in an vision. So twenty six, evidence act, prakaram, police, nara, oru aajir, padukke, oru magistrate. Neen vandu, indha confession record pannu, he must follow procedure of one sixty four CRPC. So idhavum vandu, judicial magistrate, vandu, gavnathu la vichukkum, arutha enna solavara. If confession statement is referred to section twenty four, is made after the, after the impression caused by. Such inducement, threat, promise, as, in the opinion of the court, is fully removed. Abhin vandu, court can look into, trial court, trial court, vandu, twenty four, enna chulladu, evidence act. Threat, promise, inducement, irukkunna, trial court, muriyavada, adhavu, one sixty four CRPC la, edutha, statement. Or extra judicial confession, chulli, oru V o, friendi, relate, stranger, andha maripuva, thundalan, cheri. Adhavandu, andha maripuva, threat, promise, inducement, irukkum, bachekku, it become irrelevant. Whereas, section twenty eight, enna chulladu, andha maripuva, sandarpum, irundu, pitpanada, sandappam alla, onumai illa. Naal chella, chella, adhikaaparamda, andh accused, vandu, volunteer, indha maripuva, oru magistrate. Orhath, extra judicial confession, kuruthurukka, trial court, nambinaal, section twenty eight, prakaram. Andh statement, relevant, eduthukalala, abhin, oru, adhe ma, section twenty nine, enna chulladu. If such statement is otherwise relevant, it does not become irrelevant merely because. Ippu vandu, or accused, or V o, oru, andh V o, alladu, oru, third party, friendi, oru. ஆட்டு போய்ந்து மாறி நான் சொல்ல பொறும்பு நீங்க வெளி சொல்லக்கூடாது. அப்பினா நான் சொல்றேன் வச்சுக்கோ. அ விண்ட் ரிலேடி வை, V யோ யாரவத்தட்ட, மனச் பொறுக்கில்கிய. நீங்க கேள்வி பட்டுள்ளீங்கள்லவா, ஒரு கொலை, நான்தான் பங்கணுங்க. இப்படி பியலாம் பங்கணுங்க. ஆனா தைவிசீதே ரா நீங்க ரகசிமா வச்சுக்கணும், அப்பினா நான் சொல்றேன் நீங்க. அப்பின் சொல்லி சொல்லி ஒரு ஸ்டேட்மெண்ட் ரெகார்ட் ஆயிருந்தாலோ, அல்லது வந்து ஒரு விண்டோ, ரிலேடி ஓ, ஒரு V யோ ஓ, அவர் வந்து இன்குஸ்பண்டது. அதா அது வந்து பாரப்பா யாரா கொலப்பண்ணாங்களாம்? பார்த்த ரொப்ப க்ளப்பரா இருக்கிய, அச்சிரிமா இருக்கின்னு இப்படி பண்ணுவாங்களா, நாங்க நம்பக இல்லையே? எப்படி முடியுமெல்லா, ஒராளால முடிவே முடியாது, அப்பிங்களா யாமாத்தரமாறி. ஡ிஸப்ஷன் பிராக்டிஸ்ட். அப்ப உங்கள் என்ன தோனு? இல்லையே எல்லா தால்மா செய்லாம், இப்படி பண்ணா பண்ணா, பில்லம் மண்ணா அப்பின் சொல்லி. சொல்ல வரும்போது தன்ன அறியாமலே ஒதுக்குறது. இட் இஸ் இன் கான்சிகன்ஸ் அப் ஡ிஸப்ஷன் பிராக்டிஸ்ட் அந்த அக்யுஸ்ட் பர்சன் பாரி பர்ட்பஸ் அப் டைனிங் கன்பெஸ்ட் ஸ்டேட்மெண்ட். அல்லது நீங்க பார்த்தீங்கன்னா, இந்த சாரைகர காஸ்மாக்கு சில வீட்ல குடிச்சுபோட்டு இந்த ரோட்ல குடிச்சிட்டு போய்ட்டு இருக்கும்போது, இந்த அக்யுஸ்ட் தன்ன பொற ஒளராரும் தெரியும். நான்தா கொலப்பண்ணே, அப்பின் சொல்ல. அப்ப அந்த சமயத்துல பக்கத்துல இருக்கறோங்க, கேள்வி கேக்கே கேக்கே, அவர் பட் நடத்த அப்படி ஒப்பிச்சு வந்தானா? அது ஒரு எலுத்து முடியுமாகவு, அல்லது வந்து ஒரு வாய் முடியுமாகவு, அந்த விட்னஸ் எடுத்து பிடிப்பு போலிஸ்ட் சொல்லுறான். ய ஓரல் ஆர, ய ரைட்டிங், அந்த எக்ஸ்ட்ரா ஜுடிசில் கன்பெஸ்ட் வந்து. அந்த மாறி அவா வந்து குடிபோயில் இருந்து சொன்னாலும் கூட, அது சரிதா. அந்த குடிபோயில் இருக்கும்போது அவங்க சொன்னத கேட்டிடலே, அவ்தோ கையத்து வாய்ங்கிட்டாங்க. அது வந்து டிசிட் இது ஜந்து இருளவன்று இருக்கும்பா? ஸெக்சன் twenty nine. அதே மாறி பார்த்தீங்கன்னா, சில சமயம் வந்து அவன் வந்து கேள்வி கேட்டுட்டு போங்க. என்னப்பா சம்சார் கொலப்பண்டான் நாங்க, என்ன ஆச்சினே தெரியல்யே? ஏய் எப்படி போன, எப்படி ஆச்சி, உனக்கதா தெரியுமா, அப்பின் நாள் கேள்வி கேட்டுட்டு போகும். அவன் அறியாமலே ஒரு பேச்சுலா வச்சு. அது சொல்லவேண்ட அவசியமில்ல, பட் அவனே அறியாமே சொல்லவண்டு சொல்ல. அத வந்து அவங்க பயன்படுத்திக்கறான். இப்ப சபோஸ், ஒரு V ஓட்ட விண்டி இட்ட, அவர் பை வந்து நான் கன்பெஸ்ட் கொடுக்க பொறும்பறை அப்பின் சொல்லும்போது. அவந்து ஏய்ப்பா, நீ இ சொல்லாத, நீ சொல்லவேண்ட அவசியம் இல்ல. அப்ப இத சொன்னேன் வச்சுக்க. ஒருவர போலிஸ் நான் கூப்புறுது, எனக்கு கூப்புறு கேட்ட, நான் சொன்னேன் வச்சுக்க, உனக்கதா பயன்படுத்திருவாங்க. அப்படிங்கிர வார்னிங்கும் தரவேண்டிது. சோ ஸெக்சன் twenty nine இ வந்து எப்படி அப்ரோச் பண்ணிருக்குன்னு பாரு. சோ ஒரு ஒரு கன்பெஸ்ட் ஸ்டேட்மெண்ட் ஐதர் பய் மாஜிஸ்டேட் அந்த ஸெக்சன் one sixty four அக்காரக்கிய மாஸ்டேட் அந்த one sixty four C R P S ஆர் அன் இ எக்ஸ்ட்ரா ஜுடிசில் கன்பெஸ்ட் பய் V யோ அன் இ தேர்பாட்டி, விண்ட் ரிலேடி வை. அவங்க சொல்ல சொல்ல எழுதி, அவங்கள் ஒரு கையத்து வாய்ங்கிருந்தாலு. அந்த ஸ்டேட் கூட்டே, ஸெக்சன் twenty four எவிட்னஸ் பிரகாரம், ப்ராமிஸ் திரைட் இன்குஸ்மெண்ட் வந்துச்சு. டையல் கோட் நம்பினால், இட் இஸ் நாட் லிக்கின், இட் இஸ் இருளவன். பட் அரே சமயம், ஸெக்சன் twenty eight என்ன சொல்லுது? அந்த மாறி ப்ராமிஸ், திரைட் இன்குஸ்மெண்ட் எல்லா, காலஞ்சல் கரச்சி போய்ங்க. அவா வாலன்ட்ரியா அதெல்லா சொல்லிக்கான் ஒரு முடியுக்கு வந்தா, இட் விக்கம் இருளவன். அடுத்த சர்க்கும்சன்ஸ் என்ன சொல்லுது? அந்த அக்யுஸ்ட் போரில் இருக்கும்போது சொல்லிருக்கலா, அத ரெகார்ட் பண்ணிவச்சிருக்கறாங்க. அவரை அவரை வந்து வான் பண்ணாம் இயே, உனக்கதா பயன்படுத்தும் வான் பண்ணாம் இயே ரெகார்ட் பண்ணிவச்சிருக்குறாங்க. அல்லது வந்து அவ்டு வந்து நான் நீங்க சொல்லே, நான் வந்து யாட்டி சொல்லமாட்டே, அப்பின் ப்ராமிஸ் பண்ணிக்குட அவர் சொன்னது ரெகார்ட் பண்ணிவச்சிருக்குறாங்க. அதே மாறி வந்து பார்த்தீங்கன்னா, அவர் யாமாத்தி, அவன்தான் பண்ணிப்பான் சந்தேகம். அன்னா நான் அவன் யாமாத்தி நான் அது கேள்வி எல்லாம் கேட்டு. அவங்க கேள்விக்கு வெள்ளு வேண்ட அவசியமே இல்ல. சொல்லி அத ரெகார்ட் பண்ணிவச்சிருந்தாலோ. அதே மாறி வந்து வேற மாறி அவங்களுடன் பேசி, நைசா பேசி அவா இருந்து வரவைச்சுன்னாலும். இந்த மாறி சூழ்நல் இருந்து கொடுப்பப்பட்ட அந்த கன்பெஸ்ட் ஸ்டேட்மெண்டை கோட் வந்து ஒதுக்கவேண்டிய அவசியம் இல்லைன் சொல்ல. இட் விக்கம் இருளவன் அப்பின் சொல்ல. சோ ஒரு கன்பெஸ்ட் ஸ்டேட்மெண்டு மாஜிஸ்டேட் ரெகார்ட் பண்ணும்போது. ஒரு எக்ஸ்ட்ரா ஜுடிசில் கன்பெஸ்ட் ஸ்டேட்மெண்டு ஒரு தேர்பாட்டி ரெகார்ட் தமிழ்தாலோ. அந்த ஸ்டேட்மெண்டு எப்படி கோட் அணுகதுங்கறது? twenty four, twenty eight, twenty nine வந்து மிக தெளிவா உங்களுக்கு வந்து. இப்ப இந்த சர்க்கும்சன்ஸ்ல ஒரு கன்பெஸ்ட் வந்து கோ அக்யுஸ்ட் தராரு. அந்த கன்பெஸ்ட் ஸ்டேட்மெண்ட்ல, இந்த ய யேங்கர ஒரு அக்யுஸ்ட் வந்து கன்பெஸ்ட் ஸ்டேட்மெண்ட், எக்ஸ்ட்ரா ஜுடிசில் கன்பெஸ்ட் ஆகட்டும், ஜுடிசில் கன்பெஸ்ட் ஆகட்டும். ஒரு பீங்கர் அக்யுஸ்ட் பத்தின் சொடாரு. நானு செஞ்சி அவரு செய்ந்து பண்ணுனா, அவர் இத பண்ணன், அத பண்ணேன் சொல்லாருங்க. வேதர் தத் கன்பெஸ்ட் அப் கோ அக்யுஸ்ட், போரு பீ கேதரா பயன்படுத்த முடிமா அப்பின் பார்த்தீங்கன்னா, அத ஸெக்சன் thirty. வென் மோன் பர்சன்ஸ் தான் ஒன் ஆர் பீங்க் திரைட் ஜாய்ட்ரி பார் சேம் அப்பன்ஸ். சச் அ கன்பெஸ்ட் மேட் பய் ஒன் சச் பர்சன் அப்பெக்டிங் இன்சல் அன் சம்மதர் பர்சன் இஸ் ப்ரூ. கோட் மேட் டேக் இன்டு கன்சிடெரேஷன். சச் கன்பெஸ்ட் ஆஸ் அகீஷ் சச் சதர் பர்சன் ஆஸ் வெல்லாச் அகீஷ் ய பர்சன் ஹூ மேக் சச் கன்பெஸ்ட். உதார்த்துக்கு பார்த்தீங்கன்னா அந்த ஸெக்சன்ல வரு. A and B jointly tried for murder of C. If it is proved that A said, B and I murdered C. Court may consider the the effect of this confession as against P also. If A is on the trial for murder of C, there is evidence to show that she was murdered by A and B. And B said, A and I murdered this C. This statement may not be taken into consideration against A because B is not jointly tried together. So, ஸெக்சன் thirty எவிட்னஸ் ஆக்ட்ல ஒரு கன்பெஸ்ட் அப் து கோ அக்யுஸ்ட் இன்னொரு அக்யுஸ்கேதரா பயன்பட்டும்போது. பிரஸ்ட் கண்டிஷன் என்ன, அந்த ரெண்டா அக்யுஸ்டு மே. டையல் ஒன்னா சந்திக்கணு. டையல் கோட்ல அவர் A, B, அவர் பிரஸ்ட் அக்யுஸ், ஸ்கெண்ட் அக்யுஸ், போர்த்த கேஸ் சொல்லி. ஒரு ஜாய்ங் டையல் அப் அ சிங்கில் கேஸ். அதுல வந்து ரெண்டு பேர் அக்யுஸ்டா. better accused at at the la vande our ear canal a or 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 police it or compression alder the magistrate the confession could turn around now pinna di court retract when you were and the co accused no no not there la we voting for la master train for la up in a stand to be it or not our go on Alun me our good a statement or a joint rail la irundich in a and the confession of the co accused as against the other accused may be considered not shall be considered cut time in a quota may be considered as a piece of as a piece of evidence maybe considerable suppose it joint rail Allah split up a it's split up on the cap or and the one two statement a earth and the one sixty statement a earth the in the I guess you're the by in but the so confessing stay qua confession co accused a potential thirty one the mega Tilly va select condition a very important and the condition is not there come are they la thing like ignore condition not very ma either on the substantive piece of evidence Allah confession of the co accused on the substantive piece of evidence Allah about the enna actually at the under statement on the it is not tested by cross exams and the other accused it a wonder master to bind but the Luna as a part of the under yeah could the compression a be kither a bind but the NASA put on a or joint rail la we keep white pay Lee yeah even across from a quarter than a case and Kita gonna approve or ugly yeah up in a the or test of cross exam is there a white to on the be killam upon the judicial interpretation and the at the disla every one of them prosecution on the in the confession at the co accused a manas la which come as usual beyond reasonable doubt la well prosecution case as against A and B mold avon the nirvika it is number one up to Ella trial court to on the Ahma prosecution therapy la A B Rendy verse and the moderate upon an old movie with a tharana if a yes older and the confession statement one sixty four or actual confession statement to yo we could and the Narnia funny in the day you or additional evidence a resume the mirror at or base evidence a the commission could be a it the one thing we look at section thirty liquor in no luck but are these amio and the confession of the co accused on solo Malava over on the Tinnart six year piece a ripper a or approval a Murray or Tinnart seven CRP sadipadayum or approval a matter or a wonder I do a poor a model Tinnart six in the investigation stage la or a or a Ivo on the chief master but master to you CGM a Anighi in the marie on the or confession could through the car in yeah namara approval a it's a the black a visa and nirvika okay what you allow on a sacheal I'm a corrector Matt accused to kethara up in convince penny or manu could the ear canal a and the a a a prover could a VNDI and I accused to on the one sixty four CRP is a judicial master put the and the vaat mooring Allah and the CGM purchase party and the cheap matter might master purchase or the our convince ah you know nah ah ma ma in the accused to on the one sixty four CRP statement la mega Teliwa Tanny cut up a dirty Allah taan tapu Panna the Matt accuse la yep three Allah on tapu Ponna Anga up in here a vision Galley Teliwa Cholli Gira car in the or a or a or a prima face anumana took on the CGM on the are in the civil master to on the Metropolis master to on the are upon a on the approval status up the approval state of grand money ta I use list Linda or period on the a list of witnesses of the charge sheet la party in a or bear you were a enna solo on a puruvarar accom please up in one there are the ones section one three three and you are part of Tina ah section one three three of the evidence Allah on the unable to say at the club ma Vanda mana section one three three Allah one thirty three and accomplish shall be a competent witness against an accused person and conviction is not illegal merely because it proceeds upon uncorroborated testimony of an accomplice up in a RTO section thirty program confession of the co accused or an idea yet to call a movie either prosecution Mulu don't need a big can um it is number one other joint rail a arc no number two way and the confession at the co accused la and the yeah anger and the accused to taan tapu Pani we in the Ponna to Nada be care the core confess now co accused it Allah you're in the and the prosecution ear canal a case and near beach in the section thirty program it may take into consideration whereas accomplish a titty in a Enerzone a accomplish shall be competent witness against the another accused person other base Pani condition could a tap in the alka karabash in Linganala are yet to call a Quranama Vadaa a movie either in the one thirty three la accomplish evidence so or confess now up for difference in English for example illa car in a nah accomplish a Nigah on the cross co accused confession a co accused a cross when you wipe but are these amio section one fourteen presumption upon are they evidence act la one fourteen presumption Alani partying now B other one fourteen evidence act la illustration la B court may presume and accomplish is unworthy of credit or number the enemy will la Nabora la unless he is corroborated in material for evidence act la Rendi section parting in a on the corner one fourteen la may presumption a solo mullet the para para ootali that accomplished on the unworthy of credit and Allah on the corroborated by meeting particular Sweden it a accomplish one thirty thirty three in a solo on yeah even with that uncorroboration his evidence can be believed for conviction crime and accomplish shall be competent witness against accused person your conviction is not illegal merely because it proceeds upon uncorroborate of testimony before Supreme Court I quote a Randy Munda up here part of the corner for judgment la Teliwa tarana Enerzone law prudence Allah the Vivek Enerzone accomplish evidence on the only admission in evidence is a competent witness credit or thinness a portal a on the or a karabash in the la prudence program Tavai Padi Kere the anally the wonder the the moron but to Paul a up in chili Supreme Court I quote on the Neri at the TSL it a wonder a reconcile Pani in the Sachi the so or one sixty four CRP C la or magistrate confession record on the guy in the alekra Silla subsection on the yep we section twenty four evidence act to cover the twenty six evidence act to cover the the same a twenty eight it Allah Nigah on the character the moon may on the one sixty four CRP C evidence act on a Padi Kimbo the other Padi can't other much among one sixty four CRP C la accused confession statement record on the rule ten of the criminal rules of practice up in here the Nigah the same a or a accused a voluntary a sage on the confession could a Vanda or CGM to Paul indeed in the chief prepare by city Nigah Paul indeed in the our narrow judicial master to but I was sponsored Panna on a or CGM boy yo she was missing boy yo Narnia still master witnesses a portal a Ponda in a and the jurisdiction master I go on the manu could be we're on the up in visa cheat to come over the or witness our Ariya me yeah I'm a Nana Cozinha ready for ta I may not call once a or a port to the wrong so on a up in a mark Tanna intimate Pani Sachi Alika Aramista or nah or witness Allah Udoni master to enna Ponna no and the proceeding a stop Pani it rule ten in work Pani para para ni or accused to Marie sage sold a up in a reward manna Aramichi rule ten procedure a follow Pani so rule ten procedure a follow Pani mode and the witness on the illinga Tapa sold to Nigah now on a the Pani yeah up in sold on a the procedure stop so Nigah on the for in a Kondai for money for ah yeah not Pada a it's a so you look like last time one sixty one CRP C ruled on the PSO Padi thermal rules of practice Padi you um CRP C Padi yep pretty or Ivo another no up in here or the if a on the criminal rules of practice Padi you CRP C Padi you for one sixty four CRP statement a or accused a player car on a or witness a player in the word the la I think it is now time up I suppose and Allah it a on the in a practical Nama evidence act la Nama yep we cross exam initially the bind but the pora in the I I I believe we can make in another session Enerzone
okay sir okay
oh this thank thank
Munis sir
ah sir
ah doubt not a bit a doubt a that's all ah sorry not a very good one sixty one one sixty four la and subject related that doubt a minute hand raise Ponna ah Munis or over a Nigah be on the and our doubt a no subject
please sir please sir
sir good evening sir one sixty per statement la books of case la victim girl statement could a
come on
and sir after upon trial court la Peta having a false witness a Maddy they're anga illa Nantucket a cat I Pata Ranga so after upon if a examine Pati na and the Swadi case la Pati na ah I will be real Sachi Amara Suleyman a case at the angle and number in the team that a the or Kailan I will Maadi Sonal a the problem me
la ungalakku on the one sixty one CRP C la or witness statement could needy Monday la on the bolt a or a witness
okay sir
another or a victim a on the ah Sachi a up a adicha on a Ener procedure up in solo mode or Kerala a ah the it Allah I'm on the Google a special a Sola car wait and the judgment program Enerzone on a immediate and the ponno Mela or a perjury case Potter number one sixty one CRP C a on the Maru but my box a on the and a arrow on the it a Narakla like in the accused a Kaya the where I where yaro or the name Allah Maati Chornar nah hostile Pani upon a on the the Kerala a judgment Enerzone on a or an idea upon a Nara D a cool a day at the cap or Matta Sachi Allah visa charge Allah out a on the three on three la on the accused a la K L V K to but he Vong G or a lack his therapy witness visa a day in the Ari mental a K at the cap or court are on the the ponno on the voice only Nara unme Marachic to V unne up in good a judgment pronounce Panna mullet the and the ponnu kethara on the perjury case to utro a law it a on the the one sixty one CRP C Padi for the one sixty four another that added a circumstances in a one sixty one Koda police Maritiyo promise but either or a connect la or Sachi Allah sick la in the I'm solo varla but whereas one sixty four where the in a or magistrate on the voluntary a or on the a visa rich a record when you car in the court are number and the volunteer silly in quarter number of us in with a definitely number of us illa so the corrupt visa a Ponder Namo on the one sixty four CRP C statement and the victim Tarka white to la could turn the voluntary could the white to[1398.33]